To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have the 2019 tax rate hearing.
Yes, and so I put everything on slides so that media can gather it and collect it. So the first thing that I wanted to do in the tax rate hearing was to talk a little bit about state requirements for school finance. Chapter 165 of Missouri state law provides that all school monies must be accounted for within a rank mark of four funds, and that is the incidental teachers' debt service and the capital projects, and I'll define those a little bit better in just a minute. The law also outlines that debt service funds must be maintained in a separate bank account, and we do that. And at the bottom of the screen there, I put a link to the complete financial accounting angle. If you're really bored and you're looking for something to read, it's a great way to put yourself to sleep. But anyway, there is where all the laws and the information for school finance can be found from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So the four funds as required by law, we call it Fund One, and it's called the incidental or general fund. That fund is used for all financial resources except for those identified in the next three funds. Fund Two, the teachers, it's also called the special revenue fund. This is legally restricted to expenditures for the purpose of teacher salary, benefits, and also tuition that we have to pay to other school districts that provide students from our county services. Fund Three is the debt service fund. This fund is used to pay our bond payments, so our long-term debt. It cannot be moved anywhere else, it stays in the debt service fund. And then Fund Four are capital projects funds. These funds can be used for facility acquisition, construction, lease purchase, principal and interest, and then it says at the bottom, other capital outlet expenditures. So like this past summer, we did a roofing project and worked on some roofing here on this campus, on St. John's campus, and the payment for that project came out of Fund Four. So that's kind of what a capital outlet expenditure is. So this is a lengthy process that we do once a year, so I always go to a workshop to kind of refresh myself where you find the numbers. So what happens is at the beginning of July, you get the assessed valuation, but it's before the Board of Equalization. The state auditor has an Excel worksheet that you use to kind of plug all the numbers in and kind of get a feel for where your tax rate might be. And then at the end of July, beginning of August, I get the assessed valuation after the Board of Equalization, so those are the final numbers. And then you do have to go into state auditor's website, input all of the numbers for your tax rate calculations. The state auditor's office reviews the information and then emails you back that your calculations are correct and/or you need to make adjustments. So once you have that information, you have to put out this legal notice of a tax rate hearing. It has to be posted. So the law does not say that social media are a website because when it was written, it was before the digital age. So we've talked about this at the conferences I've attended. To be on the safe side, we posted in the paper and we posted in three public places along with our social media feeds. So it was posted on the district website under a live feed. District office, Bloomsdale, St. John Elementary, the middle school, high school, we did post it in Herald, Sun Times News, and at the county courthouse and city hall. So this has been posted in the public places for eight, nine, 10 days. It's been there a while. So here is a tax rate history, and it does have the 2019 information that I will be recommending tonight. Fund One, you see a dollar and 84 cents. Fund Two, a dollar 18. Fund Three, 44 cents for a total tax rate of 3.4612 this year. So I think the next slide, yep, there it is. So when you do the calculations, the first number, that 3.0212, is what they call the operating ceiling tax rate. Operating, yeah, operating funds can be put in Fund One, Fund Two, or Fund Four. Traditionally, for many years, St. John R2 has put those funds in Fund One and Fund Two to help cover employee salaries. And then the ceiling for the Fund Three debt service this year was 64.6472, and so we rolled it back to, I am recommending we roll it back to the 44 cents that we need. And I'll talk again about that large debt payment that we have coming next year, that large bond payment. So these are the numbers that I am recommending. The next slide, I want to show you a little bit on the debt service history. As you see, from 2017 back, and I think that runs all the way back till the early 1980s, 26 cents for a very long time, and then we had to make the increase, and again, I'll go over that in just a minute. But I did want to point out, in 2018, we were able to roll back the debt service 10 cents, and this year, we're rolling it back almost 21. So very happy that we can do that. So why, and I went through this last year, but I want to explain again. So why does the district need the additional 18 cents in Fund Three? That's because we have a large future debt service bond payment, and that is on this slide. So you see, in 2018-19, our bond payment was 1.4 million. This school year, 1920, it's 1.4 million, and then 2021, it's 2.5. So we rolled, we increased the debt service last year, and we do need to get it this year to make sure we can make that payment in 2021. And then you see in 21-22, the debt service payment rolls back to about 1.3, and it stays right in there for a little while. So I've had a lot of questions about this, too. When the auditor was here in November 2018, he talked about a $6.8 million increase at the end of the 2017-18 school year. This was in our debt service, and it has to stay in our debt service, and this is from a bond refunding that was done in December of 2017. That money is sitting there and is generating a little bit of interest that will be used on that large bond payment. But this money has to go out in March of 2020 to pay two principal payments from that bond refunding. So here it is, all of the payments together. You see it in between 1920 and 2021, I put where those payments are going to come out of. So on March 1st, 2020, we'll pay 2.6 million for principal for Series 2010B bonds, and then the 4.2 is principal for Series 2015A. So that's just a little bit of history and why we have to set the debt service at 44 cents. I want you to see the payments, I want you to know what we're doing and how we're going to cover it. So again, I just pulled this section out of that public, that legal notice that we posted. So this was on the legal notice. You see the tax rate ceiling with the description of the need for the operating funds, where the district was choosing to split those out. And this column where it says proposed actual tax rate levy, this is my recommendation to set the 2019 tax rate for, so people will be able to see our expenditures and their bills. And the maximum property tax revenue that you see, the total, if we received 100% of the tax revenue, it would be about 13.7 million. But whenever I do budget it, budget to be a little conservative, I budget receiving about 95% of that because we don't, I don't think we've ever received 100% of taxes because of Julie's taxes, and people just aren't able to pay. So I think doing a 95% collection rate is a little over 13, that I actually have to budget. It would be nice if we got all of that, but. So this is all of the information I have on the tax rate. Now is the opportunity for board members, participants, the audience to ask questions because this is a hearing. It's time to generate information. So, does anyone have any questions?
When we did the bond refunding, moved the payment, we saved money.
Yes.
In order to do that.
Yes.
And thus, the payments paid later, but we gained from that.
Right, maybe it's came later, and then they accelerate a little bit, and then they go back.
And the interest on that savings pays the interest payment later on down the road.
Yes.
How much did we save with refunding?
It's a million. There's a million, I wouldn't say 1.2.
Then the 18 cent raise to 44 cents on the debt service we talked about last year was not only for that purpose, but in possible preparation for not receiving a pilot payment next year.
Correct, from the largest possible.
Hopefully, when that occurs, we can roll the debt service back.
As well as possibly the operating levy.
That would be wonderful.
Yes. Or something else.
But this is, this is the final year for the pilot payment, this school year.
That's what I was saying.
Well, I'll move to set the operating levy at 3.0212 and the debt service level at .44 for a total levy of 3.4612 for the 2019-20 school year.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda.
Approval of the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, approval of the agenda, thank you.
Approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. Now we have the approval of consent.
Vote for the consent agenda, I don't disagree.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. I do have a quick question. On the, within the consent agenda was NRCAN, the approval, is that available on campus right now?
Not yet.
Okay.
We will, Nurse Gina has been talking with Dr. Kanami, Dr. Kessai, I believe, and we will have it after these, now that these policy updates have been approved. The only, we have a procedure for how it will be administered if we ever have to use it. The only individuals who can do that are nurses.
I thought that was an excellent addition.
It was something that we debated quite a while.
Next, we have public participation.
I think this is us.
Okay.
So I wanted to thank the school board and administration for allowing myself and Dr. Edderton to go to Anaheim, California for the FCCLA Star Events Nationals, where I was able to meet multiple people from across the country that I probably never would have met, and better my public speaking skills.
I don't know who you are, but let us know who you are.
Drew Newman.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
And congratulations on making it. Absolutely. That was awesome.
Next, we have the report of the superintendent.
In your packet, you have some awesome notes of appreciation. Starting the school year, I have enrollment numbers. When I was looking at these, you know, it's from the first day of school, so we know who's here, but we don't know who is left just yet. So these are not totally 100% accurate, but they are the first date numbers. Notice Bloomsdale is in yellow, St. John Elementary is in orange, middle school is kind of aqua, and the high school is a tanned color with the districts being in neon green. So all the way over in the right are the 2018 enrollment numbers on the first day of school. If you look at pre-K, it looks like we were up a few, kindergarten, we had more kindergartners, we had more first graders, we had less second graders. So if you just look through there, you'll see the increases and the decreases are elementary buildings. And then I'll go ahead and move on to middle school and high school. And I have a summary page where I'll talk about those numbers a little bit more. So I did separate preschool and K through 12 for this enrollment report, and like I told you that whenever I did, it was a January enrollment. So I plan to do that moving forward. So in preschool, it looks like at Bloomsdale, we continue to have 19, which is really good. At St. John Elementary, it looks like we increased five. At St. John Elementary, we not only have the regular preschool classroom, but we have our early childhood special education program, so students come in for various services. So in pre-K, it looks like we're up five right now, but that fluctuates and changes because we're always enrolling new students to the ECSE program. Our K through 12 enrollment, it looks like, when you compare 2019 to 18, Bloomsdale Elementary is up 24 students, St. John Elementary is up 21 students, middle school is up 16, and the high school went down two. So overall, on the first day of school, compared to the 2018-19 first day of school, we're up 59 students in K through 12. But like I said, I know we have some students who have transferred out since the first day, so when I do my next report, I feel like that could be a more accurate portrayal of our actual enrollment in the quarter. But I was very pleased to see an increase in enrollment.
Seems like we're always around 18, 19.
Pretty much, around there right now. I'd like to stay there or grow.
Grow would be good.
Grow would be good. Now, this time of year, the superintendent always talks about maintenance, housekeeping, and I wanted to add technology. They do such outstanding work during the summer, the things that they do are amazing. They, you know, maintenance, housekeeping goes through and empties classrooms and cleans every little surface, and it's amazing to watch them clean it and put it all back in. Maintenance does some amazing things, from building new offices to putting peat gravel back in playgrounds to rewiring entire classrooms. And then, of course, technology, sometimes when you see their work area, you're wondering what the heck's going on, but they always do it every summer, they get everything in, they get it cleaned up, get it reformatted and ready to go. So we just have amazing people who do amazing things. So I just want to ask you all, when you see these people in maintenance, housekeeping, and technology, to thank them for all that hard work, and it is greatly appreciated.
Absolutely.
Especially when we go in the technology room and see all of these computers, all of these pieces are painted, I wouldn't even know where one of those went.
You guys did a great job, yes. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Taylor.
I'd like to talk about the professional development day, back-to-school day we had. Some of you were able to attend, I hope you enjoyed yourself. In your packet, you see an agenda for that day. It's quite the feat to try and organize 200 and plus faculty and staff members and attempt to get them all the training that they need, and it's always ever-increasing. So I feel like the day went pretty well. I'd like to thank Bailey Otto, she was kind of my sidekick on this. I threw some ideas out there, and she just enhanced everyone I had and brought some of the others. She did a fantastic job helping plan and schedule all of this, building admin as well. They're very flexible when it comes to attempting to get everybody placed appropriately. So I feel like it was a great day, I can't wait to get the survey out there and get some results back. He had, Adam Welkum was our speaker, he had a fantastic message. We sold, their company sent books, and we're always kind of hesitant about pre-ordering those, but they went like hotcakes and we even.
Sold them 35.
Total?
Yeah.
So we had to put an order in because he ran out, and so we put an order in for more books that people sign and send back to us. We were able to go out with him the night before and have dinner, just a really genuine man who cares about students, and it mirrors our message here at St. John Elementary, so if it kind of had.
Standing ovation, we can't do that off.
That's right.
That's true. So I'm currently planning the always 30th professional development with some more training and some more speakers, and I'll share that with you shortly. We'll get the agenda out to you ahead of time, Mr. McDaniel. And hopefully, you'll be able to stop by for some of that as well, so.
Next up, I asked Mr. Jason Owen, our Assistant Director of Technology, to come and talk about Identikit. So can you pull up your video?
Yes, so I'm not going to talk a whole lot, I'll answer the questions you might have after you watch this video that I had Ms. Bailey Otto put together for us, so I can't take any credit for this.
This year, our school district is implementing Identikit, the visitor management software that helps our school track visitors, whether they're parents and guardians, volunteers, or vendors. When entering one of our schools, please bring your driver's license for a quicker sign-in process with this new program. If you do not have a license, you can still sign in. The program runs an instant check against the National Sex offender Registry using the visitor's name and date of birth. The school district is not collecting any personal information. The program does record the reason for the visit and where the visitor will be in the building. After submitting this information, the program prints a visitor ID badge with a profile photo included. The program will also help document our students' attendance and tardies, along with keeping track of who is in our building and where they're located in case of an emergency. The safety and peace of mind of our students, faculty, and staff is important to us, and this program will enhance our security measures when welcoming visitors into our buildings. Thank you for watching.
So these are what the badges look like for any visitors, members, or volunteers that come into the district. And these are kind of the name badges for the tardy passes for the kids. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
If you come in, I like the elementary building.
So the elementary, Bloomsdale.
You have access.
Middle and high school.
All the way through.
They have that system in all four of those buildings.
What I'm saying though, if you check in at the elementary school and do the fact all buildings are interconnected, and will this amount of bill?
We like for them to check out because of emergency purposes, that way we know in case of emergency where they're at. So we ask that they do check out of the building, they checked in.
So person wanted to go to the elementary and check out, they go to middle school and check out, go to high school.
And check in, just really for safety and in case of emergency.
Is that only if you're entering the building, like if you're just picking a child up at the door?
Yeah, and you're fine then, but if you just going in to get a kid and they bring him to the office then, but if you're going past the office, they want you to bring your license. It's a lot quicker. Use it 10, 60 seconds. Yeah, it's a lot quicker with your license. There's a barcode on the back of it, you just scan it, and then again, scan it on the way out to check out. Yeah, so they're very identifiable, the visitor passes, so a lot of times, faculty or staff notice someone walk around without that, then they'll know that they didn't check in and send them that direction. Do you guys have any questions or concerns or anything?
I'm not crazy about the name "I" did a kid.
Yeah, yeah. Identikit. It's unforgettable. You know where I'm at if you have any questions.
I'll get my dad at the gate tomorrow, come and see you though.
And we have discussed, especially Mrs. Diesel and Mrs. Huth, who's been for field trips, parents really need to, parents will have to come in and get a badge, have background checked before they help us supervise kids.
If somebody shouldn't be around students with that red flag.
Yes, it'll notify the people, we have a notification list. Yes.
This is definitely going to help me design how many times I come up here. Oh crap, I forgot my card or my badge or whatever. Well, thank you for giving, thank you Bailey.
Yeah, and as a parent, I'm extremely happy the safety and security and the best interest that you and our administrators do for the district. It's really nice and very, very appreciative of that, you know, especially, you know, the two kids in the district.
Oh yeah.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Haas. I have a question, I think this is fabulous, but when we host like the larger events where we have a large val, volunteers, for instance, like the band, marching band festival, will this be available, will you want the parents, because sometimes it's not just parents, sometimes it's siblings, aunts, uncles, citizens in the community, you know, that are exposed to not just our children, but dozens of schools.
But this particular, if I'm right, I'm glad you asked that question, but this particular program is for being in the building, right?
Access to the building.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. For your festival, that's right.
Yeah, like if there's a portable one that like Mr. Mooney could have down there to scan, or someone could scan, just to check that the volunteers aren't under registry somewhere.
And you were talking about volunteers.
Well, the staff is our, yeah, like we can't do the guests, right? But the volunteers.
That's what I was clarifying.
Yeah, the volunteers that are working.
I think your point is that when we do the band festivals, it's like a field trip, but we don't go anywhere.
Right.
We have all these parents working with all these students and various other students from many other districts, so in essence, it becomes a field trip, we're just at home. And so should we be scanning those people? My thought would be yes. The good thing is about the system, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, it runs off the laptop, it plugs into an AC outlet, so although in and of itself, it's not designed to be portable and very easily can be moved for a day, so we could accommodate something like that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Next, I wanted to make the public aware, and we have it posted on our website and our social media page, DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, is asking everyone, parents, students, former students, teachers, board members, basically citizens of the state of Missouri, to take a look at the Missouri School Improvement Plan 6. There are new standards and indicators, you can pull each one up separately, so you don't have to go through and answer questions on all of them. Like I know the first section is on leadership, and it's more about boards and how boards run school districts, so you know, specifically for board members, I think that's the area that you would really want to focus and make sure you answer questions on. Well, you can also do the others, that's probably the most, one of the most important. So I wanted to put this information out there, the link to the standards in the comment where you can make comments is at the top above the picture. This link is open until 5:00 PM on August 31st, so please take the time to look at those, review the ones that you feel, you know, you have the most knowledge, review them all, and provide comment if you want. We just ask for your feedback. And then in your board packets, there's plenty of safety reports, I don't know if we can talk to you in there. Not yet, we'll get some next month. And that is all on my report.
Thank you.
Any unfinished business?
There's no unfinished business.
Onto new business, approval of summer 2020 MSHA debt period for activities.
Yes. Yes. So Mr. Nix and I have been talking about this because, well, let me start with this. MSHA requires that the summer dead period be nine consecutive days in length. It has to start on a Saturday and last through the second following Sunday, so nine days in consecutively. But the thing that I want to make everyone very aware of is this spring, the legislature's, the Missouri General Assembly, passed a bill pushing back the school start date. Governor Parsons signed the bill and it's now law. Starting with the 2021 school year, public schools can have class no earlier than 14 calendar days prior to the first Monday in September, which is Labor Day. So for the 2021 school calendar, that means our first allowable day to have school will be Monday, August 24th. I don't know, I'm not saying it's going to be the 24th, the calendar committee still has to work through a lot of items and discussions, and most starts that process a lot sooner than we normally do. But this is law, we are going to have to comply, so Monday, August 24th would be the first day we could schedule the day, our first day of school. I asked Mr. Nix to contact MSHA because the first allowable fall practice date is Monday, August 10th, which would be two weeks before the first day of school. He called, and underneath that, with the fall dead period on August 3rd through August 9th. There is a summer dead period, and then before each sports season, the fall, the winter, and the spring, there's a seven day, they call it a dead period, but it's really minimal contact. Coaches during the preseason dead periods can talk to their kids, they can have them come in, they can wait, they just can't actually have physical practice with them. So those before-season dead periods are a lot more lenient. But the fall one, the fall dead period is August 3rd through the 9th. So Mr. Nix called MSHA and talked to Dr. Erhan, who is the director, executive director, and at this time, MSHA does not intend to change that first allowable practice. They're going to leave it on August 10th. So Mr. Nix, the only, they said the only way that they would move it is if there is legislation introduced that forces them to move it this coming spring. So Mr. Nix is going to go talk to the MAA middle school principals and athletic directors and talk about pushing back the middle school season, because middle school wouldn't start on August 10th, they would start the following Mondays, so middle school would have practice for a week before they'd actually be here at school. So they're going to try to work that out. But, you know, knowing what we know, we want to go ahead and set the dead period for next summer so that parents and families can start planning vacations. So our recommendation for the summer of 2020 MSHA dead period for activities is to set it August 1st through August 9th. If legislation is introduced that forces MSHA to move back that fall practice and the preseason dead week, we're just going to leave the dead week on August 1st through the 9th, and like we did this summer, we'll actually have two dead periods. We did discuss pushing this back, but we felt it was important to go ahead and get it out and leave it there, and then we'll plan the rest accordingly if they're forced to change it.
So volleyball and football start before school, I mean, unofficial games?
No, they have to have 14 days of practice, so they would have 10 days of practice if we start on that day.
But we have games this year before that day, I mean, the jamboree is this weekend.
Jam, it's Friday. They're right, I mean, we could have the jamboree, yes.
Before school starts.
Volleyball doesn't start until next week.
So next year, they wouldn't be able to have the first game until the 24th or 25th?
They still might do the jamboree on.
But.
Yeah, probably, but in official contests, they would have to give their 14 days of practice.
If they're 21st, they should probably have the jamboree.
Yeah. Just to put it out there, this, so remember, this board went to Dead City to lobby against that new law that moves the date back, because we just think it should be a local decision based on your school district and your patrons. However, it's in place, so if we start later, we go later, so. Might be June when we get out, if we have significant snow days.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
We'll discuss that more as we start working the preemptive, um, parents are really going to have to look at pushing back not planning vacations for the end of May, beginning of June, because their kids could still be in school taking exams.
And the driving force behind it was?
From what I've been told, tourism, like at the Ozarks, the state fair, just tourism groups surround Missouri. They feel like they need, our families need the time in August to really plan vacations and spend more time throughout Missouri, doing various tourist events.
Really hot parts.
There are really hot parts, yes. I move to approve August 1st, 2020 through August 9th, 2020, for the summer of 2020 MSHA dead period for activities.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have action for.
Now, before Mr. McDaniel reads this, I'm sure those of you who have attended for a long time have sat and listened to him read the entire page. But I recently attended a DESI training, a workshop, where we were talking about Sunshine Law, and several districts asked a question, they were doing the same thing that we were reading all of these, and we were told that we should only read the reasons that were going into closed session to address. So that is going to significantly cut down what Mr. McDaniel has to read here. So I just wanted to forewarn you in case if some of you went through a withdrawal or something.
I think Mr. McDaniel might be.
So, Mr. McDaniel.
Oh, man. I move that the Board of Education hold a closed meeting with a closed record and a closed vote following the regular open meeting on September 17, 2019, to be held in the R. Devin Thomas Library, 715 Washington Street, St. John, Missouri, for the purpose of discussing and voting upon, voting upon the following items of business. Hiring, firing, disbanding, or promoting particular employees. Records protected from disclosure by law. I further move to notice this meeting is intended to agenda be posted as required by law.
Second.
I'm getting out of motion.
That was quick.
I'm sorry.
Roll call, Eric Walker.
Yes.
Dave Ova.
Yes.
John Hug.
Yes.
Jim Kirschner.
Yes.
Tara McGeddon, yes.
Martha Reesinger.
Yes.
Richard Rudolph.
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
I'll move to go to a closed session and a closed record and a closed vote after a short break.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries.